Hello, on behalf of the Scotts Bluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce, welcome to our candidates forum for the 2024 general election. This candidates forum features individuals running for Scotts Bluff City Council. This candidates forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scotts Bluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. Along with my co-chair, Don Wolf, my name is Bill Boyer and we appreciate you joining us. We'd like to thank the Rural Radio Scotts Bluff staff for the recording of this forum so you can view it, as well as Scotts Bluff Public Schools for the use of this facility. As a reminder, there are four candidates running for Scotts Bluff City Council. In the November 5th general election, you'll be allowed to vote for up to two candidates. The top two vote-getters will be elected to serve the four-year term. Before we meet the candidates, I'd like to go over the format for this forum. First, I'd like to let you know that this format is being recorded live and is presented unedited. Before we begin recording, candidates randomly chose the order where they were seated and introduced. We'll begin by asking a question and each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond. Then there will be an optional 30-second rebuttal for each candidate following the answer. After the final question, each candidate will be allowed one minute for a closing statement. There is a timer in the room and each candidate has been informed of the format and rules prior to tonight. None of the questions have been given to the candidates in advance. Now, let's meet the candidates for this forum for Scotts Bluff City Council. Jerry Stricker, Selena Lerma, who could not be with us this evening, Scott Phillips, and Cassandra Louter. Now, let's begin with our first question. For you, Jerry, what prompted you to run for this position?
Well, after retiring from a 40-year career in the fire service, public service at Golden Fire Department, I needed to have a purpose plan and a retirement plan. Part of that was to continue to be involved in my community wherever that was, and I ultimately chose to return home to Scotts Bluff. I wanted to continue to be involved in the community so I could draw and utilize my public service experience and training in a meaningful way. And that started in the fall of 2022, October, when I was appointed to the Planning Commission at Scotts Bluff and had started attending meetings shortly after I moved back to the community. During that time, I went out and talked to people in the community in a position as a planning commissioner to get, to hear ideas and concerns from people relating to planning commission issues, mainly such as economic development. And during that time and in attending meetings, I got the sense that people were, the sense and was told that people were hesitant to get involved and engage with city council locally. And it was a little bit strange to me because those are the people that were elected to represent, and they need to be able to communicate and have open dialogue to share concerns and ideas, and that was just lacking. And so that's one of the main things I want to do to, from an overarching view, to ensure.
Scott, what prompted you to run for this position?
My wife grew up in Scotts Bluff and I grew up in Lincoln. After we were married, we lived in Arizona for 15 years, and after our daughter was born, we decided that we wanted to raise her in a community like we were raised. That prompted us to move back to Scotts Bluff in 2003. My main goal and the reason I wanted to run is I was approached by several individuals. I know that I really respect their opinions. They thought I would really be a good fit for this and it'd be good for the community. And I really just want to give back to the community. This community has given a lot to us, raising our daughter first and now raising our son, who's a senior at Scotts Bluff High School, and just something I just really want to give back to the community. Help people make sure that they're heard, just look at what's going on and be involved in it. I've been on the Citizens Review Committee for the LB-840 for approximately five to 10 years now, and that's something that I've really enjoyed. And I just want to kind of continue my, my career, not my career, my progression to help the community and just give back to the community that's given back to us.
Cassandra, what prompted you to run for this position?
Much like Jerry had mentioned, I've seen the disconnect between citizens and council and since I was young, I guess I've had that servant's heart, and so I've always been compelled to help. And I started in elementary. Carolyn asked me, she is on the Parks and Rec Board with me, she had held a community cleanup day for the roadblocks to reason, and so that kind of kicked off my drive to commit to community betterment, and it evolved into youth groups, church groups, PTO, youth sports, just kind of going where I'm needed. And so I've just kind of recently taken a regional approach and gone to, I'm part of a leadership fellowship with Civic Nebraska, and I kind of work on building and figuring out what the issues are within civic government. And so that's my extent there. And then also there's six regions, one Nebraska. It's a regional development initiative, and so I'm just kind of taking a more proactive approach to just being able to contribute, do my part to bridge that gap between the city government and the citizens.
That was a pretty straightforward question. Anything you want to add, Jerry?
If I could add, I guess there's a lot of information that I have, such as my motive to serve, my experiences that I can share with others, and that's on a Facebook page that I have. And so anybody that wants to have further information, I have it publicly available on my Facebook page. Just search Jerry Stricker on Facebook if you're on there, and you can find out more information, detailed information about my experiences in public service and my motive to serve.
Scott, anything else?
I don't have anything else to add.
Cassandra? Okay. We'll move on to our second question. This one, we'll start with you, Scott. Over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended?
I think I've attended approximately six of them. There've been a few of them that I've missed due to work things. We have an office in Shatteren that I've had to be at a fair amount of time recently and it's forced things for my son, so.
Cassandra, how many city council meetings have you attended in the past 12 months?
I'd say at least 12. Sorry, I don't even keep track, but if I can't attend in person, then I usually just utilize the city's website and I'll just watch online because, you know, it's nice that we have those options and I encourage everyone to use that whenever, you know, can't make the meeting, just to stay informed and keep the citizen engagement out there. That's a good source for everyone.
Jerry, in the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended?
Well, I'll start out by saying, as I've mentioned before, I started attending the meetings in the fall since I moved back in the fall of '22. However, in the last 12 months, I would, I would estimate that I've been to at least two-thirds to three-quarters of them, yeah, because I like the opportunity to engage face-to-face and in conversation when it's allowed at meetings, and so that's my preference.
Okay, Cassandra, we'll move on to the next question with you. What would be your solution to closing a possible budget gap if the upcoming Proposition 1 does not pass on the November ballot?
I think we need to take a really close look at the budget and just, you know, obviously the first to go is usually parks and rec and just the amenities, but I think just have an all-compassing view of what our needs are and have a cutback. I'm sure there's places, you know, within administration that can kind of preserve their assets a little bit longer and it's not, excuse me, not have to spend as much, but just trying to find those areas where we can just cut back the costs and try and get rid of the budget.
Jerry, what would be your solution to closing a possible budget gap if the upcoming Proposition 1 does not pass on the November ballot?
Well, I think the first thing is, and this should always be done, to take a look at what's being done, how it's being done, just in a self-evaluation of how things might be able to be done better or more with less, perhaps less. And if that's done and there's still a gap, obviously there would be, I would talk to community members to see what's important. I know that it would be awful difficult and I would be hesitant to make any cuts in essential services such as public safety, the general fund, non-proprietory budgets, but there's an argument to be made that parks and recreation is also an essential service as part of overall community health and wellbeing, but certainly in comparison to the essential public safety services, it probably would take a little bit more of a hit, I would think. And beyond that, I'm not sure there would be the possibility of pro-asking for more property tax, which is probably not the best and certainly not a good option.
Scott, how about you? What would you, your solution be for closing a possible budget gap if the upcoming Proposition 1 does not pass on the November ballot?
First thing that comes to mind for me is definitely looking at what efficiencies anywhere we can, we can make some cuts, be it personnel services or whatever, just to be more efficient while still maintaining the services that the community needs. After that, you know, you really need to just look at, you know, purchases, you know, can we put off purchasing a new dump truck? Can we purchase, you know, put off purchasing a new police car, whatever we need to do there? And then look at services that we're providing, make sure that we're, of course, covering the essential services, but make sure that we're, you know, efficient with everything we do. And the efficiency is the big thing to me. After that, of course, you know, looking at other revenue streams, other ways to kind of make up that lost revenue to close the gap.
Cassandra, anything else you want to add there?
Just that I agree about, you know, finding additional sources of revenue that could be explored, obviously, immediately.
Jerry, anything else?
I would say, obviously, that seeking additional sources of revenue, fees for services such as parks use and those type of things would have to be looked at, and that would be something I would be in favor of as well.
Scott, anything else? Okay, Jerry, we're back to you for the first question now. What are your thoughts about, you guys mentioned recreational facilities. What are your thoughts about recreational facilities within the city and maybe a possible cooperative agreement with other entities to fund such facilities, maybe an aquatic center or something like that?
Well, what I would say is that an aquatic center, to me, is something that is, you know, that I would like to see be more of a multi-use kind of escape to where the puck's going to be type of a proposition, to where it could perhaps be a year-round facility, partially indoors, partially outdoors perhaps, that can meet the needs of local recreation, local swim sports teams and youth teams, and to maybe attract some tourism, at least from the Panhandle perhaps. And those type of propositions with a project of this size certainly can't be done very well, I don't think, from a financial perspective, individually by individual entities. So I, along that, this proposition of an aquatic center, along with perhaps some other services that we could talk about, joining forces with personnel, finances, to have joint cooperation with other entities such as the City of Gearing is something that we should seek. A lot of people I talk to often wonder why there is not those efficiencies and how, and I don't know what those are, but having been here from the background and having a background in the community, I think it evolves from something as silly as high school sports, and that's what people said, and it just seems like there's that rivalry that needs to be transcended as we get out of those days.
Scott, what are your thoughts about recreational facilities within the city, including a possible cooperative agreement with other entities to fund such facilities, including perhaps an aquatic center?
I think, you know, going with cooperation with another entity, other cities to jointly do a facility like that's a great idea. It's hard for one entity to afford to build it and maintain it. And having grown up or having had kids that grew up here, the Parks and Rec is extremely important to me. My son is involved in sports, my daughter was involved in sports. Having those facilities available to the kids, like the Landers Soccer Complex, like just really any parks in town, and that's one thing I've noticed, my daughter lives in Omaha now, and that's one thing I've really noticed about Omaha, is that there's so many green spaces, walking trails, parks, lakes, all kinds of things all spread out through Omaha. Now, we are much different than Omaha, we're a much smaller population base, tax revenue base and everything else out here, but I think we could do something like that and add more, more park facilities, multi-use facilities type things in the valley. And I think it'd be a great thing for our valley and for, you know, recruiting, you know, doctors, other families with children to the valley. That's something that they look at when they, so I think it'd be a really good idea. It'd be hard to, again, of course, Scotts Bluff to do it on their own, but I think partnering with another community or other communities is a great idea for that.
Cassandra, what are your thoughts about recreational facilities within the city, including a possible cooperative agreement with other entities to fund such facilities, including perhaps an aquatic center?
I'd be in favor of it, mostly just because you have a sense, is it, just partnering, making it a community asset, but among different communities, because a lot of our revenue gets brought in through different regions and, you know, where the retail hub of the area. So just kind of exploring those options, making sure there is a good, it's a financial look at the benefits versus the cost, because, you know, being on the Parks and Rec Board, I've seen, you know, the trouble we sometimes have with just keeping the pool running and, you know, having lifeguards needed and just trying to bring that onto a larger scale and just giving those other resources, you know, maybe we can bring more jobs here and that kind of goes into something entirely different because of housing issues, but that's a whole different subject. So I'm in support of it as long as it's more of a partnership, because I don't think the city can fund it on its own.
Jerry, anything you want to add?
Well, what I would add for those that may be hesitant to partner with other entities such as the City of Gearing, I would point out that we already do partner with them in significant other services such as landfill services where we utilize Gearing, the Gearing landfill for trash services and are currently looking at the landfill north of town. Also, we partner with them on the stormwater quality program to meet the requirements of stormwater quality. So it is being done and it is, it can work.
Scott, anything else? Cassandra? All right, Scott, the next question's for you. The cost of developing and opening the proposed regional landfill continues to increase. Do you feel it's still in the best interest of the city of Scotts Bluff to proceed with that partnership?
I think it's definitely a good thing to proceed with partnerships. I kind of question whether this is the right road that we want to go down, whether we need to do this or we need to partner with another agency or another facility that already has a landfill facility in place that we can start using. You know, landfills are a huge, huge, are a huge undertaking to get them, all the requirements taken care of, all the permitting taken care of, and then you have the whole operational part of it. So it's something that I'd want to look at more as far as the actual numbers go and where it's going, but it's something that I'm kind of on the fence about.
Cassandra, the cost of developing and opening the proposed regional landfill continues to increase. Do you feel it's still in the best interest of the city of Scotts Bluff to proceed with that partnership?
I'm in favor also of partnerships, but I think it's just, it needs to be something that is well thought out. I haven't been a part of those conversations, so unfortunately I don't know where we're at. But I think as a community and, you know, within the government, the city officials, we want to make sure we have those communications, and that's where, you know, my part of engaging with the citizens and kind of getting their input, but also having the solid facts and the numbers to go along with it so you can make an educated decision. And I think that's kind of what we're lacking, is that kind of guidance to what the right answer would be.
Jerry, the cost of developing and opening the proposed regional landfill continues to increase. Do you feel that it's still in the best interest of the city of Scotts Bluff to proceed with that partnership?
Well, I think that, like Cassandra said, I have not, have not had access to all of the detailed information to see what those costs are and how they've increased. However, I think we need to continue to look at it as an option. However, we also need to look at other private public partnerships or other entities for partnership and not have this be the only option. And really, we base that on data, and that is the cost on a per-ton basis to deliver trash to the landfill, and that takes into account the cost that a partner may have drew on it. And part of those things, if we do partner with a, some private entity or other entity, directly, part of the agreement has to be some controlled escalation and increased cost to the City of Scotts Bluff that is ultimately borne by the rate payers of the City of Scotts Bluff. So some controls, while there's, running your own landfill may provide a little bit more control over the costs. The cost of developing the landfill and running and maintaining and the equipment associated with it has to be looked at against the potential for having just some private service, partnership with a private service to deliver to an existing landfill.
Scott, anything else you want to add on the landfill? Cassandra? Jerry? Okay, we're on to you, Cassandra. Recently, there have been several serious injury and even fatal traffic accidents in the city of Scotts Bluff. What do you feel can be done to make the motoring and pedestrian traffic more safe in our city?
I think that's one of those things that we definitely need to speak to the right people who know those numbers, because I really would like to know them, so I will check on that. But I think it's more of a highway issue. I don't know where the disconnect would be, you know, because it seems like a lot of them are on the highway and I don't know who talks to who to get things done, but it also has to come from the citizens. They need to put in the work and, you know, show up at the meetings and do their part to get action taken, so I just encourage people to do that if that's something you're pushing.
Jerry, what do you feel can be done to make the motoring and pedestrian traffic more safe in our city?
Well, what I would say is that while speed is a factor in many accidents and serious accidents, what's more important, I think, is the differential in speed between two moving objects in terms of serious injuries in accidents. And I've listened to and read about people's comments on the Panhandle scanner and when there's accidents along Highway 26, the Highway 26 corridor, and I think that because it is a higher-speed highway, more traffic, I think that is where most of the accidents have happened, at least with significant injuries. I know there was some on 27th Avenue, or at least one on 27th Avenue near Dairy King. And I think one of the things is, and I've asked for, mentioned this in my role as a planning commissioner, as we consider different developments, for example, the Uptown Mall, is to take a closer look at the traffic accident data and consider a little bit more traffic engineering. For example, part of the comments that I made to the record in the planning commission hearing for the, for phase redevelopment of the Uptown Mall was to consider moving the intersection of the Frontage Road along the mall, taking the opportunity perhaps moving further west of the current intersection so that there's not a backup in cars that may stick out in traffic. I had the experience of actually not anticipating a semi turning left onto the Frontage Road and kind of got stuck behind it, overhanging the eastbound light at 26 level, and thankfully nothing happened.
Scott, what do you feel can be done to make the motoring and pedestrian traffic safer in our community?
The biggest thing, in my opinion, I do a lot of driving around during the day with my child, and the biggest thing that I notice is distracted driving. People staring at their phones while they're driving, people that are speeding, people that are not paying attention and not stopping at red lights. A lot of this, to me, needs to start with the community members. We need community members to step up and make a conscious effort to pay attention, put their phones down. Along with that, part of what I feel would be, a big step would be for the, I think this has to happen at the state level, that I think distracted driving, using electronics while you're driving, should be an offense that the police department's been stopping for. There's several friends that are, at least the officers in Scotts Bluff and Gearing, and all of them talk to me about how they wish they could do that, but they can't. They've got to find something else to stop the individual for, to give them a warning, to give them education on why doing what they're doing is potentially fatal. There are so many times when, and I've told my, my kids both this, we live, have to go through the intersection of Fifth Avenue, 26th, Highway 26th every day, and I tell them, you do not leave that intersection when that light turns green without looking and making sure that the other vehicles are stopping, because there's been too many bad accidents where that has been a huge factor, people running red lights, not paying attention to what they're doing.
Cassandra, anything else you want to add on traffic? Jerry?
I would say what Scott said is a very fair assessment. I think that distracted driving, particularly cell phones where it's pretty, it can be pretty visible to an officer, it should be a primary offense where that one could be contacted for that primary offense. Maybe the first part of it is education and warnings, but after a certain point in time, then it needs to be enforced to prevent those accidents.
Scott, anything else? Okay. Our next question, we'll start with you, Jerry, again. Housing remains tight and many would say too expensive. What can the city council do, if anything, to improve availability and affordability of workforce housing in our area?
Well, I'm not sure of what they can do, because I don't know all of the programs available. However, it's my understanding that Twin Cities Development has been a partner, at least with the City of Gearing, in developing affordable housing, workforce housing. And I would say that, I don't know what has all happened in the past with the Twin Cities Development and the City of Scotts Bluff, but I think it's time to reconsider reopening that relationship to see if there is any opportunities to develop some more affordable workforce housing with that entity.
Scott, what can the city council do, if anything, to improve availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
That's a really, really tough question, just because there is, I don't feel like there's a whole lot that the city governments can do. So much of it is just supply and demand, and with the interest rates the way they've been, so many investors buying houses to rent and then the demand, you know, going up for people to purchase houses, they can't find the houses. It's just such an economic thing right now, in my opinion, that I don't know how much the city can do. As Jerry mentioned, you know, doing more with Twin Cities Development, I know they have done more with, with more affordable housing and things, working with them some more and just exploring what options are there and seeing what we can do. But unfortunately, again, I just don't know how much that the city government can do on that situation.
Cassandra, what can the city council do, if anything, to improve availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
I think I'm definitely with Jerry and Scott about the partnership with TCD. They do have the resources kind of to hone in on those issues and find the funding needed to, I guess, help the city. We also need to work on, you know, trying to get developers and/or contractors to utilize the resources we have. There's many programs that they can use, like the LB-840, just utilizing those assets and drawing that revenue back in to, and hopefully, you know, rehabbing houses or utilizing the underused structures that we presently have.
Jerry, anything on housing?
What I would add is that I think that we also need to be open to considering, as was in the last council candidate forum, the possible, possible option of tiny homes or container homes. Perhaps there could be a, I think that there's a, perhaps a demand for those, I know that people would like to have places that are smaller, perhaps, less taxes, maybe more efficient, and I think that that's an opportunity that we should look at, perhaps supporting a pilot project.
Scott, anything else on housing? Cassandra? Okay. Scott, next question's for you. How does the city solve the issues of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
That's a tough question, again. It's one of those things where you just need Again, it's one of those things where you just need to make sure that you are staying on top of your maintenance, you're staying on top of replacing things in sections as opposed to, you know, having an entire area go out, just making sure that you're maintaining your systems, monitoring, maintaining, making sure you're taking care of things, staying on top of your maintenance. That's really all I have.
Cassandra, how does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
I think the city's kind of taken a proactive approach on that, but I'm hoping the comp plan will kind of detail some of those issues and bring a little light, but based on, you know, previous readings, I've done a lot to try and figure out the answer to that question, and I really don't know. There's people I would need to talk to, to try and figure out, you know, where the weaknesses lie and what would be the best route to go to solve those issues. But there is, you know, an outline of a plan there on the city website, so just exploring those points that were kind of directed in 2016 or whatever, that they had the last comp plan, and then giving the information so that they can kind of put the plan out.
Jerry, how does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
Well, I think it starts with a kind of an inspection and evaluation of the system or systems and infrastructure as a whole, and then developing a preventive maintenance plan based on those findings. One of the things is voice funding, and I, as I understand, the funding here is more from property tax and user fees. However, another option, if that falls short of the needs, my experience in the City of Golden, where I spent 30 years in municipal service, was that part of their local sales tax option, one third of that went to, every year or two, infrastructure maintenance, one third to Parks and Rec, and one third to general fund-type spending. But that's just an option to help with that existing funding, but I think that always regular maintenance, preventive maintenance and inspection to evaluate those things and get ahead of deterioration when possible is the way to go.
Anything else on water, wastewater? Okay, next question's for you, Cassandra. There's been a lot of recent retail development at Uptown Scotsbluff. Are there any policies that you would like the city to pursue to encourage more retail development in our community?
I don't know specifics on policies. I don't blame them for how those things go to fruition, but I do want to learn more. That's been my thing, is just diving in and trying to figure out how the city operates and what the steps are to make that happen. I think they've done a great job so far. It's hard to tell through the criticism, but it would be nice if the city, citizens, I guess, kind of brought that to the council's attention, whether they're in support or opposition. And a good way to do that would be to utilize the comp plan surveys that are out right now. I've got them on my Facebook, but I think the city might have them on their website for you to share, and if you don't have access to the internet, they have plans available at the library and at the U.
Jerry, are there any policies that you'd like the city to pursue to encourage more retail development in our community?
Well, first, I'd like to echo that plug that Cassandra made about the newly invented comp plan and the surveys out there to give citizens the opportunity to weigh in on those comments about those kind of retail choices. Given that, when I've been out talking to people, one of the things is, they say there's no place to shop and in particular buy men's dress clothes, perhaps women's dress clothes, maybe a few more options there. But I think that one of the other things I heard is there's a perspective from some people that I've talked to that there's kind of an apathy and proactive economic development. And I don't know what the existing policies are, but certainly a policy of proactive getting out and trying to recruit those Scotsbluff-scale-type retail facilities, the type of things that people in the community want, such as men's and women's dress clothing, and just more options for those things.
Scott, are there any policies that you would like the city to pursue to encourage more retail development in our community?
I don't know if there's any policy specifically, but I'd just like to see them keep getting more stores in the mall, filling up some more of the spaces downtown, reiterate what they Jerry said about the men's and women's, you know, dress clothes, because it's virtually impossible to buy anything dressy for a man or woman in this town these days, and getting something back in that variety. I'm hopeful that when Ross opens up and what other store is going to go in next to them out in the mall, but it's just good to see that they are working towards getting more and recruiting more bigger companies into the mall. And again, I'd like to see more things going in downtown as well.
Cassandra, anything else on retail? Jerry? Scott? Okay. Next question is, back to you, Jerry. What do you feel the biggest issue that we haven't brought up yet is the city is facing, and how would you work to improve it?
Well, I would say that based on being out talking to people as I campaigned for city council, is there's a, one of the common concerns I hear perhaps is as simple as code enforcement. And there's a lot of talk about how we have, if we're pursuing economic development and trying to get people to come and open up businesses, maybe even large businesses, move employees here, move here themselves, recruit doctors, recruit nurses. We want to show a city that has a little bit more character and maybe cleanliness and less prone to abandoned vehicles on streets, junk in yards than perhaps there is in Fugue is. And that's coming from people that I talk to, and I, so I follow up and I go around, and I would say their order is that we could do better.
Scott, what do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is that we haven't addressed yet, and how would you like to work to improve it?
I think one of the biggest issues that I see is public safety staffing. You know, we have been so short on police officers for so long. I know the fire department has been short on fire officers as well. Getting those positions filled, that we can work more on the code enforcement and the thing. We can work more on the public safety as far as traffic accidents and education and the public on those types of things. I think we're moving in the right direction with the wage increases that they have recently approved, but we just need to make sure we're doing all we can to get police officers here and keep, you know, good police officers here as well.
Cassandra, what do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is that we haven't addressed yet, and how would you work to improve it?
I think the biggest issue right now is just the mental health crisis that we are currently in, just, I think it contributes to the disconnect between citizen and council, because you're not on the same level. There is, you know, when you're trying to get food on the table, your priority is not going to council meetings, and when you can't go to work because you just, you know, had a breakdown, or whatever it may be, the scenario, it could be many different things. It could be addiction. All of it contributes to, you know, public safety, having those extra resources and just getting people engaged, because everyone is an asset within the community. You just have to find that resource to guide you and hopefully get you back on your feet and contribute.
Anything else you'd like to add, Jerry?
Well, it might seem odd from a 40-year career in public safety and the fire service that I didn't mention anything about that. However, I do agree that public safety is one of those concerns, you know, that we, that staffing, and most, and more particularly in the fire service, I'm not sure that there won't be a time when there's a need to talk about perhaps a, some kind of staffing of more personnel and on the south side of the railroad tracks.
Scott, anything else?
I would agree with Cassandra about the mental health issue as well, having family members in the mental health field, and it's definitely something that our community is now lacking now. And I think when they closed the public mental health center out here was a huge, huge blow to the community and a huge mistake.
Cassandra, anything else? That was my last question, so each one of you will be given a minute for a closing statement. Our next question was to go to you, Scott, so you get the first to make your closing statement.
Okay. I would just like to thank you all for watching us this evening. Appreciate this time to get to spend a little bit of time sharing some of our views on some of the issues we have coming up. I just would like to thank you for the votes in the primary, and I would appreciate your vote moving forward for the primary election, for the, the general election, excuse me. My goal, and I'm not coming into this with any kind of agenda, my goal is to help the community grow, listen to the people, make sure people are heard and to serve and give back to the community that's given so much to myself and my family. Thank you.
Cassandra?
Okay, so this is one of those ones that I knew was going to for sure happen, the conclusion. So I'm going to read from a script for this, because I've thought it out. I want to thank everyone for watching and for taking time to get to know each of us. With rising individualism, voting is no longer seen as a civic obligation. It's often perceived as a personal choice and not mandatory. We all have a vision of what we want Scotsbluff to look like. Although it's individual, we all want the same things, a community that operates with transparency, accountability, integrity, fiscal responsibility, and responsiveness to the needs of the residents. It's important that we have open dialogue on what's working and what's not. We live in a great community, and we all play a role in what makes it that way. Hope this forum has given you insight into the, sorry, insight needed to help you decide which candidate aligns most with your goals and values. Voter turnout in Scotsbluff County for the primary election was 14 percent, so your vote matters even more so when voter turnout's that low. I appreciate the opportunity to serve my community, and I'm grateful to fill the ballot and hope to have your vote.
And Jerry?
Okay. Well, about my retirement from the fire service in Colorado after 40 years, my wife and I had a choice on where to retire, whether it was in place or move. And we chose to return where we were born and raised, in the community we were familiar with and shared the values of the community where we were raised. And we still have lots of family and friends, and of course, we're comfortable with the community. Also, a big part of that was close proximity to my two sons, two daughter-in-laws, and five grandkids, and the ability to see them regularly. Part of my retirement plan was to have a purpose, and part of that purpose was in having the opportunity to, after 40 years, public service becomes a way of life, and what I wanted to do is maintain involvement in my community in some ways, certainly not as a department head of a fire department in a municipality similar to Scotsbluff, but in a Scotsbluff, I started that with getting on planning commission, went into that in 2022, and this is a next step in being able to expand at an even broader basis my experience and training in community service. And thank you for everybody that's watching and listening.
Thank you. We'd like to thank our candidates running for Scotsbluff City Council for participating in this forum. We hope this helps you in deciding who you wish to vote for. As a reminder, in the November 5th general election, you'll be allowed to vote for up to two candidates, and the top two vote-getters will be elected to the four-year term. This candidate's forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scotsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. We'd like to thank the Rural Radio Scotsbluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, the timers for volunteering, the chamber staff, and the Scotsbluff Public Schools for hosting us. On behalf of the Scotsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee and for my co-chair, Don Wolf, I'm Bill Boyer. Thank you again for joining us, and remember to get out and vote.